At this point in time, I'd like to stand and pledge allegiance. We have Councilman Mark Jackson from Clarksville City of Clarksville. Please leave your pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation and on God and is the law, the will, and justice for all.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, first on our agenda, we have a state championship baseball team. We love our state champions here in Harrison County. I will say that.
That's right.
Shinston Little League team, they won their state championship. We have the evening, we're going to, the CD, we're going to recognize them. And I believe we have some certificates.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
I think there's an 11-year-old.
Mr. Tucker, would you like to assist with the top test?
Yeah.
She might have mixed them up, so it's Mr. Tucker.
You'll get them at this one.
That's right. Well, welcome, and we'll read the names, and we'll have those certificates come up. And then, um, David's not here to take pictures. He's a national night out, like your aunt. Okay, we gotta have, we gotta have pictures so we can put the good news out. So we'll read the names. First of all, let's mention the coaches. These are the 11-year-old state champions. They had a 5-1 record, defeating Ballin's Hurricane, Martinsburg, Huntington, and St. Albans. And it said after losing the first game, this team battled back and won five straight, outscoring their opponents 26 to 0.
Wow, 26 to 9.
Corrections.
26 to 9. Quite the accomplishment being from Shinston Little League with such a small community and program. So we're welcoming you, we're gonna recognize, I guess that's Eric Miker, you're the coach. Would you like to come up? You have, he has a certificate, it's at the end.
That was also my typo, that's my.
Oh, okay. Kaylin's off the hook. And then he has his assistant coach, Sam Fisher. Oh, you guys stay up here. You gotta be in the middle.
We got, we got some kids playing in another tournament, I'll have to pick up theirs.
Oh, do ya? And then Carl Hoskinson, the assistant coach as well. We figured we'd have the coaches up here so they can greet the boys when they come up. All right, let's recognize Casey Pump. He's from, does he go to Lumberport?
He's a footballer.
Football, that's all right. Lumberport Elementary. And then River Miker, Big L. I'm assuming. And then Ryder Strye, also from Lumberport.
He's playing in a tournament at North Carolina right now.
Oh, man. Are they on the summer travel teams? Colby Maxwell, Lumberport Beach. That's the one. Rowan Donaldson, Big L. Congratulations. Sorry, you're not at the beach. How about Chase Fisher?
Fish.
Brody Hagan?
Fish.
He's Big L student. Jordan Riddle? Owen Fisher? Related to Sam Fisher? I'm smart like that. That's right. Casey Lindsey, Big L. Congratulations. Mason Bray, Big L. Like the uniform. I think that's what you have here, that's all I have, is, do we have everybody ready now?
Yeah, that's it.
Want to say thank you to the parents. Do you guys want to say anything? As a coach, we're gonna make it count.
Thank you to you guys for recognizing us as a team, we appreciate it. What are you gonna say?
You're welcome, and we're proud that you're part of Harrison County, and you represent Harrison County very well. So thank you for coming in, parents, thank you for bringing them. You'd like to take a few pictures while they're all up here? We can do that, and you need to get in there, Mr. Tucker.
We'll have you guys step in right here.
All your certificates up.
Come forward a little bit. Right here beside him.
Hey, we have, we also have Donnie Powell here, he's the principal at Big L. And Bobby Dell, he's the principal and assistant principal.
Okay, one, two, three.
You know better than that. Thank you all, thank you for coming in.
Thank you, everyone. Next, we move on to our next special recognition presentation. Jocelyn Humby Elmer, 2025 Association of School Business Officials International Emerging Leadership Scholarship recipient. That's it all? Is there anything else?
They kind of.
That's great. Yes, I can, I'll read, I'll read them all out.
This is a big deal.
Yes. Jocelyn is only the second person from West Virginia to ever receive this scholarship award. The scholarship provides district plus membership for the finance team at a value of $699. Includes more than 150 online courses for district finance staff provided by the ASBO. Registration fee of $849 for Jocelyn to attend 2025 ASBO International Conference in Dallas and 2,000 for travel costs associated. Specialized training available for scholarship recipients. And this is a very, I guess, if nobody knows, the ASBO is the School Business Officials, correct? Association of School Business Officials. So congratulations to you, and thank you for representing us as well as you did, or were going to.
Would you like to say a thank you this time? We're really happy to have her in our finance department. Hang in there. Picture, you want to do a picture? Anybody else want a picture?
It's all about her. One, two, three.
She's enjoyed really the work with, and that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we had, our next recognition is not available this evening, so we will move that, Jace Berry, we'll move that to November.
Yeah, she'll get her official public word.
This takes us to delegations. Any delegations? No delegations? Isn't this brings us to the superintendent's update?
Sure, I have a few things. First of all, I'd like to introduce everyone to James Kossick. We've got the pronunciation of his name. He put his cozy, it was Kossick. And he is. And he started yesterday, and I said today, every time I saw him, he was carrying a new binder with either budget or our tenure facilities plan or something. And so he's hit the ground running, since he started yesterday, and he's our new facilities maintenance supervisor.
Congratulations, welcome next.
And the other thing, I wanted to just update you, we've got trainings going on everywhere. This place has been bustling, which is great. And they say there's no parking spaces, it's because we're doing training. I didn't get information today, because we're doing the LEVIS II grade book. And so we rolled out training and sent that out to the staff. I think we had 100, yeah, 100 each day. They came in and took an opportunity to do the training with Amy Webster and Justin Typer. We've put together a letter that will go home to the parents to talk about the portal and how they can log in to LEVIS to get the information for the grade book. Right now, 31 counties, they're using the LEVIS II grade book, so it seems to be the direction that everybody's going with that. It'll roll right over into report cards and things. So appreciate Justin and Amy doing the work and setting that up with our teachers. We had all the CTE staff in today for a full day of training, talking about, you know, just all the things they need to know, budgets, programming. That was a full house today, optional. Next week, we have, there's been a big concern with training for aides, because we've had so many new aides coming on deck, and so we've got training scheduled for them, multiple times, different things next week, different groups coming in, so that's all happening. I think the bus drivers will be in one full day for training, so feel good to meet all these drivers from transportation, all, they'll all be in. Special ed workshops are happening this week. We have two full days for special ed teachers coming in. I believe Mr. Gibson will have the cooks in and his cafeteria managers, he's got some special things, different things planned for them, so it's just, it's a busy time on top of teachers getting into the buildings and getting their classrooms set up and working. They officially start Monday, and I think a lot of them are already, as they normally do, putting in a lot of hours, so we just, you never can say enough about the time and effort they put in getting things ready before they're actually ever even on the clock. So they just do it for the plus, they do it for kids, so we appreciate all of that. Also, she already left. Renee Powell was here, because she had so many kids from Big L in that group, but we found out that our service person of the year, Ivy Alonso, and Renee Powell, our teacher of the year for Harrison County, are now in the top five for Harrison County, so they said, they.
That's huge.
It was huge, because I actually got a call from the State Department telling me to keep it a secret. I knew July, Fourth or Fifth, and that it was the first time that a county ended both finalists for service and for teacher. So we're really proud of them, and just the people that nominated and worked with them every day. We've just got really good people in a lot of great places, so congratulations to them. Well, no, September the 9th, there's an evening presentation, and I guess whoever gets the rose. I'm not sure how they do that, but they will announce the service and the teacher of the year then. Of course, I will be there, and we'll get you that as soon as I have. Just an update on, I don't know how much to get into, into the building stuff, because I'm sure he's had a chance to look at some of it, but the modulars that we were going to move from not a core primary to birth, Mrs., or Dr. Looker has found some spaces for those teachers. She needs those storied, so we're looking at a way to get her some storage, maybe offsite on each of those modulars, so she can bring those teachers into the building. So we appreciate Dr. Looker. A lot of schedule changes and things happening there, but she's got teachers that are either leaving, and of course, Ms. Leesberg, we look at each position, and if it can be not filled back. So she's really hard to think schedule changes. But I just wanted to let you know that the modulars will be pulled out on Monday, and we will not be keeping those.
We're not keeping it?
No. So we'll save quite a bit by not leasing those, because she was able to pull those into the classroom. Liberty has, as you know, with any construction projects, has been, Liberty is, it was the bathrooms that were, we've got toilets out of bathrooms, they were having difficulty getting some of the materials for the bathroom, and I believe that was, that came today, and so they're getting those bathrooms put back together so we can get the toilets out of the classrooms. Because we have teachers in there working, and I did have somebody say, you know where the toilets are? I said, yeah, they're bought in the bathrooms. But teachers, I just hope that there's patience for some of those last minute things. Things can be a mess, and then it'll get cleaned up, and they always pull things together in our maintenance department. Can't say enough, they're going everywhere.
They have to bring the toilets, the stables from those pools over there.
Yeah. That's great. So everybody's kind of pitching in, we have a couple of classrooms, for whatever reason, that did not get on the list at Liberty for paint. And so Chad, we've mentioned it, Chad, and they've already, I think they're about done. Yeah, so you, I just can't say enough, Mr. Gibson worked with the maintenance department to get all the kitchen equipment moved, working with the cooks to get the kitchens up and running, so appreciate that. I know you complimented the maintenance for helping you get all that stuff quickly moved to where it needed to be, so there's just a lot going on. It will come together, we promise, because kids are coming whether we're gonna be around, that's what we say, and I know it's been a lot of work for, for our staff to get it all done. It's been a whole group effort. Mount near Elementary is, they're working on that, we are working to get the, the maintenance get behind on schedule, but they're telling us it will be done, so we will have those kids in and have them ready for that. The rooms that are working on the pre-k and kindergarten classrooms, so all the outside work's done, they connect with utilities, that's what put them behind a little bit. Mr. Kossick, do you have anything else that you'd like to say?
No, I, I would just like to say, my observation of the last few days, Harrison County has a lot of really good people. Sometimes they, they don't understand everything, but they really do mean well, and when it comes crunch time, they seem to pull together and really do a job. Just like today, I got an update on the school buses. All the school buses that we need to open up, go pick up kids, they're all done, all the maintenance is done, everything's ready to go, and we actually opened up those parents. There's still other buses that are still need to be worked on, but I think some people are afraid that all the, all the maintenance on the buses wouldn't be done, but it's, they're done, they're ready to go.
Appreciate that.
We've got the playground bit. Mount near.
I think the playground.
Structures are all in, structures are all in, we were just waiting for maintenance to get finished with some type of sewer pipe, and then they go down the hill to be able to get the port and place things, but they'll be ready for us.
I think the flatback playground, well, we, we got a call, one evening, the, the gas line had been flipped, and so we don't know what contractor it is, we found out it was, it was our, it was our playground, folks, and the poor guys that were in the building working were the ones that, because you cut contractors on site, so hope gas had to come out, so that, there's just little things like that, that took a couple hours, and everybody had to just clear the site, and the, you have a chance.
It's called construction.
It's all construction, and you just never know sometimes what's on the other side of the wall. But so far, it's, it's moving along, that's all we can do. I think that's it, other than we are working with personnel, busy, busy, a lot of people moving, and so that's always, we expect that in the summer, and we've been fortunate against some good applicants this summer, so we feel good about that, and we'll be updating you on, on our vacancies once school starts. We did tell the administrators that, working with Cindy and Tammy, that if they can get their interviews done, we can get some more people hired, because that's a quick turnaround, the posting comes out at midnight, so they're gonna try to interview Thursday and part of Friday morning, and we're gonna, as many as we hire can get hired that way, and then get them hired the next meeting.
Now, this be the last.
Course that is. Well, I suppose, but that's the last.
I mean, that's the last one.
While they're removing, we have to be careful, we get to the point where they're moving, and then, once we get to that point, this next posting they'll do, and then after that, we'll just have to see position by position. I mean, if it's somebody that can move without much heartache, or the administrators agree.
We're being tight, actually. Will we be able to meet by before school, so?
For the next one, we've got one more post, and we should be okay. It'll be on the second day, because that.
Yeah, the second day. Or they would start, our day is going right.
Like do something quicker than.
Yeah, do silly.
See how many we have. Yeah, the postings, they say.
School board will be able to experience.
I know any service that can move, because it's all by seniority, we'll try to get those quick, quickest we can. Anything we can possibly get moving on, we go. We expect that personnel, we're, we're pleased this summer with applicants. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, brings us down to consent items. Is there a motion to accept consent items as presented? Note that you also have some transfers in front of you as well as the ones that are posted on your agenda. Is there a motion to approve consent items?
I've seen one.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion on any of the items there? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New business, out-of-state professional leave request and out-of-state travel study request. Is there a motion to approve? Sub move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on out-of-state travel and study requests? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Child nutrition costs, is there a motion to approve raising staff lunch costs from $4 to $5 and raising milk sales to 50 cents?
I've seen one.
Is there a second? Is there a second? I'll second. Is there any discussion? Any questions with Mr. Gibson?
Yeah, he came.
He's gay, yes, would you like to speak to this point?
Just as the water raising, he, he attends all the nutrition director conferences. I believe we've not raised for quite a few years.
Yeah, every time I asked him, do you remember when it was raised last? It was like, as long as I can remember, so.
Been $4.
Yeah, as far as I can remember, when I was, Lincoln, 20-some years ago, it was $4. So, but anyhow, we just try to keep, continue to find ways to cut costs, save money, generate revenue and so forth, and make our program as efficient as possible. So we kind of addressed this last year, but then in the middle of the year, we really didn't want to raise it. A few weeks ago, Lenny was at her conference, one of her finances, and they went, there's a slide, and I read the quote there from her slide, it says, meal service staff must be priced, so the adult payment is sufficient to cover the overall cost of the lunch, including the value of USDA entitlement and any bonus donated food. Well, our reimbursement from the state plus the USDA entitlement is $4.90, actually just went up to about $4.96 now, so we'd have to charge at least that in order to be compliant. So that's where the, the $5 came from. A lot of counties are charging 6, 4, 7. I'm just going with 5 for now. Makes it easier on your staff that are collecting money, you don't have to deal with ones. I know that from, can we switch from $5 to $6 of the gate for football? It was a nightmare trying to deal with all that, too, so just trying to make it easier on staff. And then with the milk, milk's gradually gone up over the years, we pay anywhere from 30 cents for a quart of milk up to $1.50 for soy or those kind of milks. So a student buys some milk, or leaves some money. It's not that, that big of an issue, most counties are charging, I think the minimum county that they told me the state was 35, besides us, we're 25. Next is like 35, and some are charging 50 cents or more. Well, again, 50 cents is easier to make change, you don't have to worry about the nickels and dimes. Also, with us all being 100% CEP, I think it's a benefit for everyone if we encourage the students, and I know some of the principals did last year, they sent members home to the parents saying, like, if you don't want to pay for your milk, have your child get an apple and one other item, and that milk is free. We get the full reimbursement, instead of making, losing money, or if this, we would make a few cents on the milk, we would get the full reimbursement. The student may try something and like it, and want to eat a lunch from then on, or at least that particular item wasn't on the menu again. The parents get a free milk, and they don't have to pay anything for it. If this child doesn't want the apple and the other item, they put it on the shared table so other kids get food, I think it's a win-win-win-win-win.
And it's a free milk?
Yeah. Any questions? I'll be around for 30 seconds if you.
50 seconds. Questions off table, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us down to our memorandum of understanding between Fairmont State University, Glenville State University, West Virginia Wesleyan College, and Harrison County Schools for clinical placement of pre-teacher services. Is there a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between all those bodies?
Some.
And moved, Mr. Tucker seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The whole business brings us to policy updates. In front of you, you have a comment, a request for a motion to approve the memorandum of understa-, I'm sorry, for the comment period request for policy 5136 for your personal electronic devices to place a 10-day public comment period from August 5th to August 15th this year. Is there a motion to approve?
I've seen one.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us down to policy update for policy 2370.01, virtual instruction. You should have that policy in front of you. Is there a motion to approve the update to policy 2370, virtual, 0.01 virtual instruction as requested by the superintendent?
I've seen one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
How can the state council be in charge of this? Didn't they used to have somebody at this whole?
You taught me about enrollment.
The enrollment, the supervision, the monitoring, the distribution of whatever. That's my first question.
So when they're enrolling in a virtual, they usually meet with the school counselor first, and they enroll there?
There used to be someone at the school who took care of all the virtual instruction. Now, because I don't remember, but I know someone.
Did it?
Yeah, our library, yeah. And she took care of all of the credit recovery, the, of anything virtual, the online recordings, online.
I don't believe that. That was probably at the school level.
It was. I think it was extracurricular.
But it was just for.
I don't know what happened to it.
It was just for her school. It was just for her school.
Yeah, it was just for her school. Right.
They had two people that next to create, or the same person, or web-based, I don't know what they called it, and the county contact.
It was called an online communications position, and we, those were all abolished probably 10 years, seven?
About four or five years ago.
Yeah, it's been a long time. They were all abolished across the county, because they were duplicated kind of services, because you had a building tech, and then.
Because I, I know she actually administered tests, like if there was, is that what the school counselors want to do also?
Yeah, like probably.
Like, you know, supervise the tests or whatever?
What will happen is, the counselors will enroll them at the school level in the virtual program. They will have access to be able to look at whether you're managing progress, treatment, first part of the course if you're taking. Mrs. McKey up here actually monitors all of that, and she gets the grades, and she sends those out to the teachers. Nobody's proctoring any tests or anything, they're just all done through the virtual program.
She sends the grades out to who?
To the counselors.
And then what do the counselors do with them?
They put them in weakness at the end of. They're, they were transcribed. They're, they took part one and a part two in order to complete the whole thing, so they begin the part one, confusingly, at the beginning of the first semester. Mrs. McKey gets those grades from the virtual teachers, she sends those to the counselors, they. They transfer those and just give you start part two. And the counselors can move in there, look to see if the students are making progress so that they can talk to those kids if they're seeing that they're falling behind or something.
My... Network is... Is this for the state virtual school or is this for the charters too?
I think it's...
It's just for the state. We have online...
It's what we always kind of have, but...
Yeah.
And that doesn't interfere with any of their council responsibilities or roles that they're supposed to follow as far as the percentage? Yes, that percentage.
Twenty-five percent is what they can do.
And my second question is, is with the, the virtual school and then the credit recovery, don't we do credit recovery after school, on, durings of the summer and things like that? And how are they, how is this particular policy, how does the credit recovery fit in with this policy? It seems to me there should be two different policies, but that's just me.
Let's have Rebecca speak to that, how she has that set up.
I believe for the credit recovery, they just sign up at the end of the school year with their counselors. That's how they generate the list of who will be attending. Of course, that's just for high school. Then they do have those who proctor the credit recovery oversee that and then are able to distribute that information to the schools to let them know if they passed or did not pass that course that they took. So, their counselors will be able to get that once they start back at the beginning of the school year.
So, the counselors wouldn't monitor the credit recovery?
No. And the counselors typically, that during the school year is assigned maybe by a teacher or something that monitors that and sets it up.
Well, again, that was the one, two.
It's different at every school. Sometimes they do it in the morning. We have students who...
Right. Sometimes they have at lunch, at lunches, different. So, that's kind of set up at the school level. Who is taking the credit recovery and things like that? And that's, you know, of course for the kids who did not pass a course. And that's a way for them to retrieve that credit without necessarily having to take that whole class again.
So, is the credit recovery compensated for whoever is monitoring credit recovery?
I think that's...
So, kind of they would do that as a duty, as an extra duty and maybe having a call ring with some students.
Okay.
Every school has a local that just...
But again, the counselors can monitor that because the high school counselors, if they're monitoring their, the students and they have a question about their credits or their grades or things, that's something that they can say, hey, you know, you're not, you're getting close, you're not going to pass this. This is an option that you have and they can get them help to get set up for when that time would come. So, maybe first semester they didn't pass science and second semester they can get them set up with that credit recovery and they would notify the teacher who, you know, is covering that and say, hey, this student's going to need, say, biology to retrieve that credit and they work together there.
But they wouldn't be in charge of monitoring that student while they're doing their credit recovery?
No.
So, who is going to? Again, that's going to be a site-based, being human decision.
Yes.
Any further questions? All right. Any further discussion? Motion is in front of you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. This brings us down to personnel matters. I would like to reduce myself from the Bridgeport Middle School, boys' basketball coach. Extracurricular recommendation, section three, page twelve. Is there a motion to approve the personnel matters as presented?
I've said yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Brings us down to legal and disciplinary matters. We have two items under legal and disciplinary matters. A, disposal of property and B, acquisition of property. You want to take the acquisition first? Yeah, let's take the acquisition first. Is there a motion to, I'm sorry, is there a motion to go into executive session and discuss acquisition of property? Someone like to make that motion?
I'm going to proceed to six dash nine, eight dash four, twelve of the West Virginia Code. We'll go into executive session to discuss any legal matters, matters which by express provision of federal law or state statute or rule court is rendered confidential or which is not considered a public record within the meaning of the Freedom of Information Act except for in article one, twenty-nine V dash one, dash one, et cetera, chapter twenty-nine V of this code.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Generally...
I'll say it rocks and cards or something.
Motion to return from executive session. Removed and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, 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 closing. We are back in regular session. This was an item on our agenda for discussion and for possible action. So there is no action to be taken at this point. So that will bring us down to the next item on our agenda. Acquisition of property. No, sorry. Disposal of property. Yes. Is there a motion to go into executive session for disposal of property?
I move pursuant to six ninety four non-Wisconsin Code. For going to executive session to consider matters involving or affecting purchase sale or lease of property, advanced construction planning, investment of public funds or other matters involved in commercial competition, which if in public might adversely affect the financial or other interests of the here's the kind of foreign education.
Has been motion made. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. We are in executive session.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, on the item in our legal disciplinary matters disposal of property after our executive session, we have instructed our council to reach out to Cluxburg City Council's council to make some discussion about certain items. Okay, so that will happen and we will not be taking a vote on anything this evening. Okay, that brings it down to board member comments. Mr. Tucker?
For those who stayed, thank you. For those who've been watching and following along, thank you all too. I'll come in person the next time. Let's get ready to get school started, right?
Yeah. Sure.
No comments.
Kudos to our maintenance, teachers, staff, admins doing their absolute best to get everything ready for school starting.
Ms. Smith.
Just like to say welcome back to our staff as of, I guess, the 11th. It's their first day back, so welcome back to their staff and welcome back to our students on the 18th because we won't release the 19th. So have a great start to school.
Thank you. I would like to again welcome you to our county. As you can tell, we've got a lot going on. You're going to find yourself a little bit busy over the next few months. But I wish everyone a happy start and a good start to the school year. Is there a motion to adjourn?